October 1st, 2019 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence your cell phone pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. The Commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on an item, please complete a speaker request form located in bookshelves in the back of the chambers and return it to Commissioner or Commission Office Manager Holly Hennies, located at the lower side of the dais. That's Ms. Holly over here. First we'll have a call to order, which we just did, moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First we'll have a review and approval of the agenda. Motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman Hancock. This is a time that we're gonna do an executive proclamation for the Black Hills Powwow. We did this last year and we're gonna do it again this year. It starts with, whereas the Black Hills Powwow Association has been a significant nonprofit organization of the Rapid City community since 1983, whereas Rapid City in Pendleton County, South Dakota, has been a host of the Black Hills Powwow Association, which has become one of the premier American Indian culture events in the United States, attracting thousands of dancers, singers, artisans, and several thousand spectators from across several U.S. and Canadian provinces and beyond. And whereas in addition to the Powwow, spectators have the opportunity to enjoy the Fine Arts Show, Isapa Wind Pageant Wellness Symposium for the youth, and tournaments for hand games, golf, and archery. And whereas the Black Hills Powwow Association promotes artistic excellence through cultural celebrations and recognition of cultural diversity, and whereas the Black Hills Powwow Association provides cultural education, cultural arts, resource programming, and technical assistance to schools and other civic associations, and whereas the Black Hills Powwow Association enhances cross-cultural education, greater understanding, and improvement of the community relations through sharing of the culture. Therefore, we, the Pendleton County Board of Commissioners of Pendleton County, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim October 11th through October 13th, 2019, as Black Hills Powwow Appreciation Days. All citizens are encouraged and welcome to participate in the Powwow and come dance with us. Enjoy the beauty of the Great Plains and the indigenous song and dance. And this would need a motion.
Thank you.
So move.
We have a motion by Roskinect.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Over the years, excuse me, over the years, the Black Hills Powwow has come a long ways. Just as this proclamation says, you know, they're promoting the youth, they have the tournaments of the hand games that we've all participated in, but it's also sharing and the culture and learning that our community learned to appreciate. Whitney and the Board of the Powwow have really done some tremendous work with the Powwow in the last few years, and I think their generation are doing great improvements. I appreciate them.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Actually, I went to the opening at Prairie Edge for the Powwow where they have people come in and that's kind of like the start of the Powwow, recognizing all the people involved and all the people that have helped with the Powwow. They had some beautiful dancers there. If you've ever went to the Powwow, we did the hand games last year, but I also went to the Powwow with a few friends, and it's beautiful. It's amazing, the costumes, the music, how humbling it is, how traditional it is. It makes your heart feel like there's, kind of like a peace or something when the drums are playing and the music's playing. It's very uplifting and humbling at the same time. So if you ever have a chance to go, it's pretty amazing. And the beauty of all of the costumes, it's pretty awesome. So if you have a chance, go to the Powwow. It's a good place to go. We have a motion by Roskinect, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Good morning, Commissioner. Dustin Willett, Pendleton County Emergency Management Director. With me I have Alexa White, my Deputy Director, and Mark Enright, our Emergency Management Specialist. It is my privilege to work with these folks every single day, and it's my honor to come before you today and recognize them for an above and beyond achievement that I really felt was worth bringing before you this morning and the community at large. So, South Dakota has a Certified Emergency Manager Program. It consists of over eighty hours of training, experiential requirements, participation in exercise, drills, planning, all those essential components of what a successful emergency management program is. Earning this designation of Certified Emergency Manager, there's two different levels, a basic level and an advanced level. Each one, obviously the advanced has some successive requirements in addition to the basic. It's not required by anyone for anything. It is a certified program, it's reviewed, and it's awarded upon review of peers after they've met certain requirements, but there's nothing that says thou shalt do this. There's nothing, there's no pay increase that comes with it. There's nothing other than the recognition of your peers that you have chosen to engage in professional development and attain this certification in the state of South Dakota. Both Mark and Alexa, at this last year's EM Conference, were recognized for, in 2019, having achieved and being recognized in South Dakota as Certified Emergency Managers. And so I just wanted to take this moment to present them with their certificates in front of the Commission and in front of the public, and thank them for making our office what it is. We certainly couldn't do what we do without the team that we have, and again, it's an honor and a privilege to work with them every day. Alexa, this is from the South Dakota Emergency Management Association, certifies that Alexa White has met the standards and professionalism established by the association and is hereby designated a South Dakota Certified Emergency Manager Advanced. So Alexa has achieved her advanced. So, thank you, Alexa.
The South Dakota Emergency Management Association certifies that Mark Enright, having met the standards of professionalism established by the association, is hereby designated a South Dakota Certified Emergency Manager. So thank you very, very much, Mark.
You have to stand in line for us.
I will give you a hug, but I wish.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for allowing or affording us the opportunity to recognize those employees. They do a tremendous service for Pendleton County. So, thank you.
Great job. Great teamwork, Dustin. Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd just like to comment, congratulate both Alexa and Mark. I know that that is a lot of work, a lot of work that, you know, like Dustin said, you didn't get paid for. You did it because you believe in what you're doing and you want to do a better job for the community and just increase your knowledge so that you know how to handle things better. And I think that we have an excellent emergency management department here in Pendleton County. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have the consent agenda, Ms. Holly. Seven through eleven.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 20th, 2019. Number eight is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on October 15th, 2019, for budget supplement SP-19-018 for the MacArthur Fund State's Attorney's Budget. Number nine is approval of the No Change Certificate for the Pendleton County Local Emergency Operations Plan submitted by Emergency Management. Number 10 is approval of the sub-recipient agreement with the South Dakota Department of Public Safety Office of Emergency Management for the 2020 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. And finally, number 11 is approval of the Adopt a Highway application for a portion of 225th Street by the 372 TRS DET-8 submitted by the Highway Department.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there anyone from the public who'd wish to pull anything from the consent agenda, seven through 11? If not, Commissioner, is there anyone would like to pull any items, seven through 11, from the agenda?
Number 11, please.
Number 11. Commissioner Drews. Any others? Now, can we have a motion on seven through 10, please?
So move.
Approve, seven through 10?
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto.
Moved by DeSanto.
Moved by DeSanto, second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Roskinect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, Commissioner Drews, please.
Well, the reason they polled us is that I suspect, and I would ask our Superintendent, Joe Miller, if we have other areas where we could use volunteers to step forward and adopt a highway program. I used to be a part of a group that did this, and I know that there's considerable work and that it really makes the areas look a lot cleaner and neater once this is done. So I appreciate the people that are willing to do this. But do you have other areas that you would...
Currently, we have, excuse me, Joe Miller, Pendleton County Highway Superintendent. Currently, we have, I believe it's fifty-eight segments of road. Generally, there are two-mile section, fifty-four of which are actually adopted. So we have about four segments that are yet to be adopted. They're not in real high-traffic areas, still in need of adoption. We did just add two up in Mr. Roskinect's district on Old Hill City. We added two segments on Old Hill City Road that had never been done before. I think Black Hills Powwow adopted those the last meeting, so.
So particular groups that you look for? I mean, I presume that service clubs, even families can be a part of.
I think we have a little bit of everything, from corporate groups to charity groups to families to, you know, there's a little bit of everything on that Adopt a Highway group list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve through twenty. Items from the auditor, first, please. Number twelve.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
We do have Whitney, who just showed up. Do we want to do...
Point of privilege for you, sir?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Cindy. So I'd request a moment of privilege to present the proclamation to Black Hills Powwow, to Whitney Redcounter and the Powwow Board at this time. Whitney, we already read it, but we'd like to present it to you.
I think, as I was saying earlier, the Black Hills Powwow celebrates and promotes cultural diversity and education and to the youth, a lot of teachings. And one of my greatest moments in Rapid City is being able to be a part of working with Whitney and his group because I believe out of so many years of working with different groups, with relationships, the momentum that you're creating, Whitney, is outstanding, and I really appreciate it. It's been needed for a long time, and if there's anything else the Commission or the community needs, please reach out.
Well, you know, I just want to say thank you to the, you know, Commission here for the support. You know, I think, growing up on a reservation, living in Rapid City, you know, half my life now, I've seen a lot of positive change, like Lloyd's, like Lloyd mentioned. For the first time, we had corporate teams playing on the Lecota Nation Invitational Hand Game Tournament, you know, and be there with the youth that all come into Rapid City. The Red Carpet Welcome, Black Hills Powwow, all of these things that are taking place in our city, it's really a shift, and I know the future is bright for our city. And I've seen a lot of positive change take place, and I think that's what it's all about. Give people an opportunity, instead of staying divided, to find ways and things that connect each and every one of us, and providing a positive avenue for our community and people that visit Rapid City to grow and support one another. I truly think that's what it's all about, and that's what this proclamation represents, that support in our community. And we have a goal of making Black Hills Powwow number one in the world by '21, when the new arena opens. And we've really, this year, we've seen so much support from our community, and this is another example of that. And I think moving forward, it's going to be a great, you know, in conjunction with the Stock Show and the Powwow, the Lecota Nation Invitational, and Central States Fair, all the great things that take place in our community, it's just an honor and a privilege to be part of this momentum. And so I want to say thank you to everybody here, appreciate your support for Black Hills Powwow.
Thank you,委員.
Whitney, you and your announcer, when you're at the Powwow, if you want to be entertained, their voices carry throughout the Civic Center Arena, and it's amazing the jokes and the things that can make you laugh. So not only do you see beauty there, you see some humor and some love being passed to your teammates around different people there. So it's a good place, like I said, it just is very humbling to be there. And I had forgotten about your announcer. I apologize, I don't remember his name, but I met him again at the, and I forget names bad, at the opening, and he's always cracking jokes. So if you want a big smile and to see some beauty, go to the Powwow. So, thank you, sir, for coming today. Next, we are on items from the auditor, number twelve, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Moller, Pendleton County Auditor. As I explained in the memo, I would like the Commission to pass the resolution so that we can change our accounting practices from the accrual method to the modified cash basis accounting. There are only currently four counties in South Dakota that do the accrual basis accounting like we do. Lawrence County was the last one. They switched to the cash basis in 2015.
So, Ms. Cindy, just a question. Two standards of reporting are acceptable, modified accrual basis or modified cash basis. Could you explain the difference and why the change?
With the modified accrual basis, we have to make sure that we account for any expenditures, anything that was received in 2019. We may pay for it in 2020, but we have to make sure that it's charged back to the 2019 budget, same way with the revenues. We may know that they're coming in '20, but we still have to account for them in '19. And there are, along with the payroll, we do the same thing with that. We make sure that all hours in 2019 are charged back to 2019. And when you're going on cash basis, you don't have to track all of those items. We don't have to do a special accounts payable for vouchers for charging them back. We don't have to do accounts receivable, and we won't have to do the payroll charge back. And it will save the department's time, it will save my department time at the end of the year processing financials. There are other worksheets that go into our final financial report that, we never book them in our general ledger, but because we do accrual, we have cross entries that need to be made on our financials, and that's the only place that I've ever seen is on those financials, they're not actually in the general ledger.
Did you get advice from the State Auditers' Office to do it this way, to make it simplified, or you just, because we're changing a few things to make it simplified with budget and other things, that you just decided to do this?
We've discussed this with the Department of Legislative Audit. Julie and I actually discussed it before she left with them. And it's up to us as to how we want to do it, just as long as, once we do it, we do it to the level of accounting that we say we're going to. They can't tell us which way to do it, because either way is acceptable.
And you have the people and the time to change the process, or is it...
It will simplify things, so, yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
And just to point out for the public, because in a way, it sounds like we're glassing over something and not doing something, but truthfully, we're just streamlining the process and not repeating it, and therefore saving tax dollars and hours, yet the accounting is still there.
Absolutely.
And the accountability is still there, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Cindy, for taking the time to do the research that we can save the county money and make it more efficient and effective. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution and authorize the Chair to sign the modified cash basis for Pendleton County.
I'll second that.
Motion by Drews, second by Roskinect. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Thank you. Items from the highway.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I know this is after the fact, but I would like to point out that we didn't mention how many hours it is saving, and they're estimating 450 hours. That's pretty significant.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to point out, just for the Highway Department, it'll save us approximately forty hours of staff time and upwards of 2,500 bucks as well, so we appreciate Cindy looking into that.
Nice. Good job, Ms. Cindy.
Joe Miller, Pendleton County Highway. First up on your agenda there is the Rochford Road Bridge Amendment. This comes to you after many months of waiting. We finally got this from the state. KJ is designing the bridge for the Rochford Road South project in dire need of replacement. They first designed the bridge with precast wing walls. The state said that they would not accept the precast wing wall, so they, KJ submitted an amendment to their scope of work to design a mechanically stabilized wing wall. So that's where this amendment, or this agreement is coming from. The tentative timeline, if this is approved, we're hoping for a February-March bid letting for the construction to fall next year. I did get an email this morning, the engineer did reach out to the Geotech Department from the state and got the information that he was looking for, and so they're full steam ahead on the design, and we're hoping we're going to make this thing happen in 2020, the construction. Our portion of this is 200 or $2,860.09. The current project is estimated at about $400,000. Our portion of that is 20%, of which approximately $20,000 has been spent for that. And then a little bit of update on the road project. We met with Ron Bangs from Interstate yesterday. He's going to submit 95% plans to the state. He's got a couple of details to finish up there next week, and then 100% review plans will be submitted to the state tentatively October 11th. And then we are planning a landowner pre-ride away acquisition meeting on October 17th. Location and time is to be determined yet, so we'll get that information out as soon as, soon as we have that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinect.
So the bridge is such an integral part of that South Rochford Road, and it's the most complex part. And there's just that design process, I can, you know, there were so many different options. I don't think the county had a lot to say. I think the state was coming down and said, this is what it's got to be. We need to get that bridge done, because if we don't get that bridge taken care of, then the rest of the road projects off the table. So I'm certainly in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Joe, could you explain the difference between the precast wing wall and the other wing wall that you were going to use? Is it has to do with possibly standing up to the, to high water? Is that what the difference is?
So it's just a difference in design, the mechanically stabilized, they, takes a lot less, so they have, there's three types of wing walls. There's the mechanically stabilized one that KJ is currently designing, the precast one, which are designed off-site, and then a cast-in-place. The mechanically sta, or the precast requires very little excavation. Mechanically stabilized requires a little bit of stabilization, because they'll take geotech fabric and basically tie the wall back to the earth for a distance. And then the cast-in-place requires a lot of excavation, and it's a kind of a cantilever wing wall design, whereas to put the earth back on top of that cast-in-place to hold it in place.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you for asking that question. Mr. DeSanto or Commissioner DeSanto? Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Moved by Roskinect, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B. Highway, please.
This is a safety apparel policy update. Currently, in our policy, we allow our benefited and full-time employees a $100 stipend for safety boots after they've been there for six months. Our temporary personnel, which are our flaggers, are required to wear the same steel-toed or safety-toed boots, but they don't currently get the $100 for the stipend. So staff and I looked at the current policy and kind of came up with an amendment that we'd like to see. So the temporary seasons, or temporary personnel, we've got four of them currently. We historically employ four of them over the summer, usually early to mid-April through the end of October, sometimes end of November, just depending on our weather. With that being said, we thought, you know, after they've been coming back for, at least they've been there for a season and they're coming back for their second season, and then after they've been employed for thirty days, that second season, we would allow them to submit a receipt for up to $100 reimbursement. So if they spend $40, we'll reimburse them for $40, but if they spend $150, they only get the $100. Be a total of $400 into our budget, but I think it'd be a bigger benefit to our employees, you know, they are temporary personnel and are required to have that. Currently, we've got four flaggers, we've got one that's been here for one season, the next is eight seasons, fourteen and sixteen seasons. So they've been coming back for a very long time.
Any questions or a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
On item 14, do you have a recommendation? Did you remark, go out there and look?
We did go out there yesterday and look. There are.
Do we have a picture?
Yeah, let's.
Let's pull that picture up.
Technology, you've got to love it.
Commissioner Superintendent, do you guys ever put a recommendation from, in the packet of what you guys think or what you guys saw? Maybe that would be helpful in the future.
For this one, I believe it comes from the landowner, so I don't think, you know, we talk, I know Mark talked with the landowner.
Yeah.
And we did stop out there yesterday. Wait till, I guess you guys can see the picture here.
But this affects your department sometimes where those approaches are and stuff, so it'd be nice to see a recommendation or just thoughts.
Yep.
Maybe when we have these kind of things in there, if that's okay with the commission, if anybody else wants to see that. I think it's helpful to be able to review that ahead of time and maybe go when, we go look at it to see kind of what you're seeing or maybe what we think.
Mm-hmm. So we did go out there yesterday and look at this. This gentleman has two approaches already. It's kind of a, there's a lot of people out here that do have horseshoe driveway, so they have two approaches for the, for their one lot. Mark and I were out there. I guess our recommendation would be to eliminate this, would be the north one. If he would like to put one here to his, I believe he's putting in a new garage, either eliminate this one to move it over here, or use this existing one to, you know, to come over to his garage. There's some options there. You know, three approaches, sheer numbers, decrease the safety on a road. Mark's got, I didn't look closely, 19 is the traffic count.
Mark Rock, Pennington County Highway. Yes, our most recent traffic count was 19 vehicles per day, and the speed limit in that area is 25 miles an hour. So it's a low-volume, low-speed area there.
So that would be our recommendation. There are, we did look at it yesterday, and there are a lot of options, or there's other options for the gentleman to create a driveway to his garage other than a third approach.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Question on that, then. So did you talk to the property owners relative to that?
I did speak with the property owners. I believe they're here today.
Yes. Who were going to listen to them, I just wanted to know what staff, you know, you guys have to sometimes, not always plow the roads, and you guys deal with roads and approaches all the time. It's nice to have your advice. I don't say we always take it, but we appreciate your advice.
From the highway department view, would it be, I see that one, that approach that you're talking about that maybe could be removed is right on the curve of that street. So would that be more ideal if it is moved over to where it's proposed?
I believe so. I mean, with a low-volume road like that, you know, in a curve's never a good spot for an approach.
Thank you.
But there is adequate site distance. It's generally flat out there, so it shouldn't, you know, it doesn't pose an issue at where it's at.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Joe, how big's that lot? Two, three acres?
I don't know that information. We can probably pull it up here on.
The applicant will prob, the applicant's coming up next. We can ask him some of that.
One other idea, I was just looking at this, if you can put that back up there. If you, if you're going, that first, the lower approach, would it be possible to come off of that and just extend the driveway off of that to the garage?
So this house and the driveway all face due south. They face this way.
Okay.
And his sewer cleanout is right here, so his drain field's out in this area.
Last question, would it be possible to do the proposed driveway and let it stay that way until such time that there was an issue with traffic, and at that time, you would eliminate one of those approaches?
I suppose that would be an option.
I'm just looking at all the options.
Yep.
Thank you. Lori and, thank you. John and Lori Sable, please. Your names, please.
Lori Sable.
John Sable. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing us the opportunity to talk today. Maybe we can answer any questions you might have regarding this property.
Ross Connected, you had.
Well, I was wondering the size of the lot, which I'm guessing is about two to three acres out there?
1.48 acres.
Do we have a discussion? Motion, Commissioner Drews.
So is it your preference to actually have three, or would you?
Well, practically, one of the stipulations for purchasing this property in July of this year was that we could put an additional structure on it. We had no negative feedback from the county or the housing development. What we didn't realize at the time, because it's a super wet year this year, was where the actual drain field for the septic tank was located. It is not installed in the ground as it was permitted back in 1973. That wouldn't, we had to go back to an aerial photo of 2012 to actually find that the original placement for the garage was off that southwest entrance into the property, who would not have needed an extra approach or an additional approach, who wanted to come off the existing driveway for the minimum amount of disturbance of the land. Unfortunately, the septic system is right underneath where the proposed garage was going to go. It's illegal, but non-conforming, I believe is the correct terminology for the septic system, so if we touch any part of it, we have to completely replace the entire septic system at a huge additional expense in addition to the garage itself. So the most practical and cost-effective approach was to just simply move another driveway, reposition the garage on the property, which was not where we wanted to put it anyway, but this seems to be where our choices are being led. As far as the horseshoe approach that's already existing, if you can see the angularity of the garage that's existing on the property now, if you try to back out of that garage, you're essentially running into your stairway to get turned around to come in and out of the southwest of the property. That's why they made it a horseshoe, I'm assuming, in the beginning. You approach from the southwest is the way we approach the property, go to the garage. When you pull out of the garage, you can back out and then exit out the north. That's the most practical way to get in and out of the property. Otherwise, you're trying to juggle between the, if we were to eliminate the driveway going to the north, you'd end up backing into your stairway to get up on that deck that's on the back of that house in the southwest corner.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
What are your thoughts on the highway superintendent's suggestion coming off of that north approach around the house to the garage as opposed to putting in the second or the third approach?
Well, I spent about 15 years in the landscape and irrigation business. I'm kind of a tree and grass guy. I'd just assumed that'd turn my lot into a parking lot and add any more additional gravel coming across and lengthen out the driveway considerably to come across the front. Is it, it's possible, yes. If that was the only choice left, I suppose to accommodate it, we probably would do that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I frankly, considering that there's only 19 cars a day, and the fact that they're probably not going to be leaving all three approaches at the same time would be my guess, that this is not a big issue. It's my feelings, anyway. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Anyhow, Roland Hills was developed right after the flood, and that subdivision is totally, I mean, there's no empty lots to speak of, so I don't see that 19 increasing, and I personally, and I know that area pretty good, I really don't have a problem with that maxes to your garage.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Move for approval.
Move by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect to allow the third approach. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item 15, Festival, Ms. Holly Hennies, Festival of Lights Parade participant.
Commissioners, we're just seeking board approval of the chair's signature on the agreement to allow the county to, again, participate in the parade of lights and pay for the $25 entry fee. The county participated for the first time last year. We won in our category, so it was pretty exciting, and we'd like to do it again. Highway has graciously allowed us to use one of their snow blowers, and we'll be decorating in November if anybody wants to join us.
Awesome.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The only request I'd have, Ms. Holly, is bring pictures after, so we can, the commission can see how you decorated, and hopefully we win again. That'd be pretty awesome. There's a lot of people that put a lot of work into it last year.
Madam Chair.
Mr.?
Joe, I want to talk to you, because I have an idea for an addition to your float. Since it is a snow blower, I want to, I'll talk to you about it.
We, we, we would like to go with the theme of Frosty's Worst Nightmare, and we have an eight-foot blow-up snowman.
Oh.
That we would like to try and figure out how to get on there this year, too, so.
Oh. I think my idea will work with that.
Okay.
Matter of fact, it'll probably even improve it.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to make one comment. I'll pay for the entry fee.
You'll pay for the entry fee? Cool. Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, sir. That's going to be cool, because I never thought about it until you just said it, snow and the snow plow taking all the snow away. Taking out Frosty, yeah. That's a pretty cool theme. People will get a good laugh out of that. Yes. Thank you, Ms. Holly. Yes. Item B is a request to set a special commission meeting. Initially, we had planned for October 22nd, but I did get a notice from Commissioner Drews that he is not available on that morning. So our request now is to do Monday morning, October 21st at 9:00 a.m., and this will be to award the contract for the Stolling Barn project down at the Central States Fair.
Thank you, Ms. Holly, and I did talk to Mike Cool, our Buildings and Grounds Superintendent, and they will be opening the bids on October 16th, if anybody'd like to be there. So can we have a motion or a change of date for October 21st? Is the motion?
Oh, and I'm checking my.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay, works for me.
So move for the 21st.
Move by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? Commissioner Ross Connect, are you okay with that date, sir?
Looks good here.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Items from Chair, Commission members, a resolution to support the creation of tax increment financing district in Hill City for the development of affordable housing. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Yes, we're asking that the chair would sign this resolution today, whereas the city of Hill City has demonstrated the lack of affordable housing by numerous in-depth studies, whereas the Heart of the Hills Economic Development Corporation's been working on a development to contribute inventory of affordable workforce housing on land already purchased or in the process of being purchased, and whereas in order to develop municipal infrastructure for the project, a tax increment financing district is needed for the streets, water, and sanitary sewer lines, as well as drainage improvements. Attached is the site plan of the proposed development, which would include 34 homes and the specific numbers that would be relative to the district.
Any questions for Commissioner Ross Connect? Commissioner DeSanto.
I have one question, a concern, actually. What, what happens if one of the homes is sold, or multiple homes are sold to people who are exempt?
There are safety mechanisms, safety mechanisms there to prevent that. I do not have that detailed information here, but there is steps in place with the city and the developer and the Heart of the Hills Economic Development to prevent items like that happening.
Okay, because originally, we would, we, I mean, from the developer, under a TIF, we would receive at least back what we've invested, but if people are not paying taxes on that property once it's purchased, then we're no longer receiving any type of.
Then the TIF definitely will not work. So, yeah, we, there are, those questions have been asked and answers provided, and so we believe we have those bases covered.
Okay. And then one other question, and no disrespect to you, Ron, at all, but who might be appraising all of these properties?
Absolutely not me, because I do not do residential.
All right, thank you.
The price range in those, we're trying to keep them in that 175 to 250. And originally, there was going to be apartments, but that got scrapped because there isn't enough water pressure right now in the city of Hill City to do the apartments. But the, the study showed last year that we could not find any homes in Hill City in that $200,000 price range, and it's really hard to attract, to attract teachers, give them a place to live in Hill City, and the enrollment in that high school, it's paramount that we keep that enrollment high, and families start, families that are starting out, they definitely need to be able to sit there and afford to live in Hill City if they're going to send their kids to the Hill City School District.
So these are individual homes?
They will be, right now on the drawing board, there could be individual, or they could be twin homes.
175 to 250, that's affordable. Wow.
Well, that's the goal. We've got a pretty, pretty good developer.
Commissioner LaCroy, then Commissioner Drews.
I just wanted to thank Ron for his work on this, because as Mark said about the, and explaining the affordability of it being the, you know, the 200, you know, 175 to 250, because there are people that work in that area, and that's, if you, I've been looking in that area, and the prices are quite a bit higher for, you're talking 350, 400, 500. So for that area, 200 is affordable, and thanks for clarifying that, because that helps.
Unfortunately, Hill City's becoming a small Aspen, very slowly, but it's getting to be an expensive place to live, and I, and you get a lot of out-of-staters moving in there, and the dynamics of that city's slowly changing, and it's going to be hard for people like me to be able to live there anymore, especially with the, my, with the income that I get from this particular assignment.
Commissioner Drews, and then Mr. Richard.
I'll wait my time.
Okay, Commissioner, or Mr. Richard, please. Your name, sir? Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, Dan.
I just want to add some additional comments here. The principal in Hill City, the new elementary principal in Hill City, is having a very difficult time finding a home to live in, because they're, everything's overpriced. I got a 2,400 square foot home that is now the smallest in the neighborhood, and, like Ron said, all this out-of-state money is coming in, and, you know, they sell, they sell their little soapbox out there in California and buy 30 acres and put a half, three-quarter million dollar house on it. So it is out of control. And I support this for two reasons. One, primarily, Hill City has repeatedly scored highest in the state in ACT scores and constantly, but nobody can afford to live up there. So, I mean, this would be a good opportunity to get people out of the school systems in Rapid City, where they can get up there and get a decent education. And, yeah, that is a slam at the Rapid City school system, so. So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Thanks for your support, Dan.
Commissioner Drews.
All I wanted to say was that, you know, Hill City has done a lot of work over the past years of trying to make themselves a, a nice little community in South Dakota. They've been very effective at it. I think this is a well worthwhile project for them. I congratulate them on moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews and Commissioner Ross Connect for all the work you've done on this, this forward and to help your district, so we commend you as a Commissioner.
Appreciate that.
We do, we do need a motion, Commissioner.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy, second by?
Oh, sir.
Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Committee reports, Commissioner LaCroy, please.
I attended Youth and Family Services, Early Childhood Development Meeting, a Policy Committee Meeting last week, and that was just some general business. One of the highlights is it's been a while since I've been to the North Rapid Civic Association Meeting, but I attended that and it was, that became very interesting because I don't remember the firefighter's name that, who attended to give the presentation, but they talked about what, what's the future of Rapid City and some future areas that they were looking at and they, he explained some of the land, where it's at, and he also, some of the questions he fielded from, from the audience was the volunteer fire departments and how they're working together with those in a couple of different areas. And so it, it was very enlightening, some of the residents had some good questions and, and they, they talked about the fairgrounds, about how they volunteered, working at the fair, during the fair, and the funding they made and I, on behalf of the Commission, I thanked them and for the Board of, Fair Board, thanked them for their service for, for volunteering every year, because they do it every year, along with all the other volunteers that helped the fair get along. So it, it was, overall, it was a good meeting and very educational. I just wish they would have them before seven o'clock at night. From my personal opinion, between seven and nine, that's usually my bedtime anymore, so, but, yeah, it is. Otherwise, that's about all I have to report to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner DeSanto.
I went to the Care Campus Meeting and most of the discussion was about funding and, and what, well, a lot of the discussion was also about the success of the Care Campus, pulling people away from sitting in jail and doing jail time instead of going and getting some help. And I believe that it's starting to make great progress and, and great impact on, on the community. Then I went for a tour of the Care Campus and it's really quite impressive. The second floor up there is coming along well, looks like it'll be done, I would say, before too long, probably within the next couple of months, I think. And the, the way that they separate the men from the women and the different opportunities that they have to go spend some time alone and, and, and then get their counseling and so forth, it, it's very, what would I say, I guess, proficient for such a small space, actually. So that was, that was enjoyable and educational. I'm sure Ron reported on the Weed and Pest Tour that we went on. It was.
Scott couldn't have picked a wetter day.
It was very interesting. I don't know if.
Lightning strike.
Okay, he did, he did mention the lightning strike. That was, yeah, that made all of us jump right out of our pants, but it was, it was very interesting and we went over six different invasive species, went and looked at an area where they, where they're experimenting with, what was it, seven different types of, of?
Chemicals.
Of chemicals to, that do not affect the, the wildlife in the area to try and address the common tansy and, and there was one other up there that we were looking at that was prevalent. Don't think it was the Canadian thistle, it was mostly the, the common tansy that they were trying to eliminate. Went and looked at the, what was it, the Japanese beetle?
Yep.
Bark beetle and how that's been brought into the Black Hills and how they're trying to trap those and, and eliminate those. Weed and Pest, being on their board, I, I just have really come to appreciate the amount of work that they do and, and how proficient they are at, at what they do to try and keep on forests and our areas of recreation and stuff in good shape and, and keep the invasive species down. So it was a, it was a good tour, learned a lot. Also had a library board meeting, library is doing well. They are going to have a pretty significant expenditure coming up here shortly on new heating and cooling that hasn't been replaced in, I think it was 28 years, something like that, that's needing to get replaced now because it's just not, it's not able to handle the load any longer. So they're going to be getting that done shortly and making the library a more comfortable and efficiently heated and cooled place to go read a book and enjoy the different offers, the different things that they offer to the public, so, yeah, had some good meetings the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Well, I'm going to add on what Mark's comment was on the Care Campus. I went to the birthday party last week and that was for the Care Campus, which turned one year old. And Barry Tice and Willie Witchell, they, they, they keep some really good numbers and those numbers are going to help guide the Care Campus into the future on what works and what can be improved and what don't work. I didn't really know much about the Care Campus when I came into the Commission last year and the more I go to the meetings, the more I understand the dynamics of the Care Campus, I want to really get more involved with the Care Campus because I think it's a very good addition to Rapid City and it's a good way to bring the different nationalities closer together. We, we got to recognize that there's problems out there and I want to be part of the solution. So I really think the Care Campus is a good addition. And when Mark was talking about the Weed and Pest, and I'll let Mark expound on this just a little bit, but one of Scott's projects was on that Islewise Road and they, the county bought a piece of equipment. It's a diamond wheel that will just walk up and snip a tree. But not only, they used to hire subcontractors and now the county's actually doing that themselves. Scott Guffey put that program together, bought a piece of equipment with the Highway Department and I'll let Mark expand on that just a little bit, but I was really impressed.
Well, not only did they buy the piece of equipment and not, and eliminate the need to hire subcontractors to get this done, but they're actually making money off of it. And they've always, they've already by far paid for the skid steer that they purchased and the equipment that they needed to go with that skid steer through the sale of, of the trees that they're taking down up there to basically create a clearing so that sunlight can get through to the roads and help melt off the snow and, and that kind of stuff. And then I think probably also Joe correct me if I'm wrong for more visibility and, and just the safety of, of driving on those roads up there. But, yeah, this piece of equipment is pretty incredible. It can, it can take down a tree that's 20 inches in diameter or it can go and, and grind it up into next to nothing in a very short period of time or where what they're trying to do is use it mostly for taking down new growth that's going to, that would fill in the area that they've already cleared and it's a very quick and effective way to take down that, that new growth. You definitely don't want to be standing in front of the thing. So, but, yeah, it's, it's an amazing piece of equipment and we, we enjoyed watching it operate. One thing to add to the Care Campus, they are, they, they are looking at, at different organizations and corporations in Rapid City to support the Care Campus for, for ongoing funding in some areas that I believe are, are good areas to be, to be looking. I won't bring up names right now until they've kind of gotten a better grip on what, what kind of cooperation we're going to get, but I am going to let you know that, that they're working hard on trying to find other sources of revenue to operate the Care Campus so that we're not holding the bag.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner Ross Connect?
I'd just like to thank that individual that contributed roughly $2.5 million to make that Care Campus happen, so we all know who it is and I just want to say thank you to him or his family.
God bless him.
Commissioner Drews.
I, I just wanted to follow up, since the Care Campus talks going on, I did some research and I found some more information on detox, about city, county. I always remembered Donna, not Donna Homely, Tom Hennings had a part that helped start it, but I actually got some of the history from somebody last week and it started in nineteen, I, I just want to share this a little bit, but I'll send it to all of you guys if I can read it. It's, it started in 1973 to 75 and it was located on the lower level of a two-story house on the corner of Denver and Silver Street and it provided detox services for, under, under the direction of the Rapid City Police Department. The facility provided such services for the community center at the time, it was 15 beds. And I talked to another person just the other day, because it was Glenn Rodriguez and Jim Menard were the techs on the time that eventually moved up and became counselors there to help the, the community. But the last thing I heard was that, yeah, it was a 15 bed, but at times it was 38 people in there. I mean, that's how much we need there was for even back then, 73 and 75. But I'll send this to you guys, but it's, it's a pretty interesting step by step of how things moved. It went from there to St. Pat Street to LaCrosse Street and some of the different changes, the programs that they provided and changes, so it's really interesting.
Thank you. Commissioner Drews.
None of my actual committees that I serve on have met since our last meeting of October 20th. The one thing I would like to report on is that earlier this year I was appointed to the Opioid Substance Abuse Legislative Summer Study Committee. We did have our last meeting, or our second meeting last Monday in Pierre studying that along with a number of other things that have come about. Sheriff Tom also serves on that committee and last week he had the opportunity to talk about the Care Campus. Vargo was also there to talk about the diversion programs that they created. A month earlier than that, our public defender, Eric Witcher, was there testifying. I don't think there's any question about it that Pennington County is far ahead of anyone else, especially in South Dakota and probably in many states relative to the Care Campus or what we're doing there. It does include obviously people that may be there because of their opioid. So, and that's the reason that I can't be at a meeting on October 22nd because that's the next Summer Study Committee Meeting for that. And they are talking about a pilot program potentially. I think that would probably be wise on our part since we seem to be far ahead of anyone else to adjust them that they might want to visit with Pennington County relative to be forward with that idea. So.
Mike.
So the, oh, okay.
Sorry.
So that's essentially where that is at. The next meeting was really designed to be the completion of the summer study, whether or not that will actually conclude with that meeting or whether there have to be continued on, because there was some discussion at this last meeting that not necessarily does it have to be something that proposes legislation for the 2020 Legislative Section. This is a big subject matter, there's a lot of research being done and so it could be carried over for another year. As to that decision, that'd probably be made at the October 22nd meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. So on the Care Campus, I was at the birthday party as well and all the Commissioners had attended. We are going to give an update. We have, I have asked Ms. Holly if she could have the sheriff and Willie and Barry here to give us the update on those numbers. So they're putting out again and that all the Commissioners and the public see what we're doing for the innovation on it and, and again, showing the progress from the beginning to the end, I think would be nice to hear how it started all the way to where it is today because now all the Commissioners have been there to see that progress. The piece of equipment you're talking about, Scott Guffey came back, I, I think you were here, Commissioner LaCroy, where he came and asked us, and maybe DeSanto, you were there, when he decided to get this piece of equipment and when you saw it, it was amazing and now that you're listening to how it works and how efficient it is and, and that's what he told us in the day, it's nice to know that it's a piece of equipment that was well purchased. So the other thing is October 4th, which is Friday, I'm going on the tour at the schools. I don't know if any of the other Commissioners, Commissioners have decided to go on that, but we met with Commissioner Drews and I met with Superintendent of the Schools, Ms. Simon, and encouraged us to go to that, so I'll be going on Friday. Also attended the Highway Dinner. That was a lot of food and a lot of fun. I can say they had the most amazing dessert, it was like a Boston cream pie cake, homemade, homemade. I don't, and that's why I'm not eating that, the mashed potatoes and everything, I'm going to go for that dessert and it was amazing. Lot of camaraderie, lot of team together, lot of people with kids. It was just a, a good bonding area for the Highway Department to show team and, and for me and other people to learn and how much they appreciate the Commission, going on the tours and seeing what they do. They appreciate that people come like Mark to see the equipment and different people here on our Commission and what we've done for them and they thank me for all of you for what you do for them as well as the Superintendent's, Joe and, and Mark. So I did find out there was a pet skunk on one of the guys that runs the equipment for snow removal thing and that was pretty fun. Had to tell me the whole story with the four children and they were screaming a couple times about how cool it was and I told him I'd never heard of anybody having a pet skunk. So I heard the, from it was a baby to all the way to the end about the pet skunk. So I had a wonderful time with your team, by the way. So that being said, any other committee reports or anything we missed? Okay? Thank you. Next, we'll move to approval of the vouchers.
I'll move approval of the vouchers, the amount of $386,000, $729,33.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 19, Items from the Public. Yes, ma'am? Usually we have speaker requests if anybody has to speak. We don't mind you coming up at this time either, but it's nice to know your name and what you're speaking about ahead of time if we could.
You bet.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Carol Hayes. I am a retired psychotherapist for children. I've moved back to the hills to retire where I grew up. Yay. So this morning I would like to address the County's Draft Hard Rock Mining Ordinance. I realize there will be public hearings on this later on and that's great, but I want to put a few things in the hopper starting early. There are many things to say about hard rock mining. Today I want to focus on two. First are the actual costs of hard rock mining and second, your powers under South Dakota codified law to protect the water supply of your constituents. First, let's look at the actual cost of mining. As you know, mining operations across the country have been going bankrupt for some time. have been going bankrupt for some time. A recent sad case in Wyoming, you may remember from July, was when the Black Jewel Mine closed its doors and left 600 miners without their pensions. And that's right over in Gillette, by the way. It's in our backyard. It also left residents with a predicament as to cleanup and reclamation. Millions were made by the owners of Black Jewel, but it will cost taxpayers millions to reclaim what was abandoned. A case closer to home is the Gilt Edge Mine near Lead. On a recent tour of that mine, I learned that they have been trying to clean it up for about 20 years. And it's cost about something like a million year, 20, $20 million so far. And it will take another 10 to 20 years to reclaim what can be reclaimed. Since it is a superfund site, the feds have been picking up most of the cost. But South Dakota taxpayers have been paying about 10%, plus the portion of their federal taxes that go to that cleanup. Importantly, on that tour, personnel from South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources said repeatedly that they are looking very carefully at South Dakota DENR's tendency to low-ball reclamation bonds that are required before mining. A similar case in South Dakota is the scandal of the abandoned gas wells in Harding County. South Dakota is suing the company for the abandoned gas mills for 15 wells, $15.5 million, but with little hope of recovering the cost of plugging the wells. What does this mean? Since you are not state personnel, but county personnel, this means more than you think. As I read Pennington County's regulations related to zoning, I find this, Section 101, whereas Chapter 11, 2 SDCL 1967 is amended, has delegated the responsibility of each county to adopt and enforce regulations designed for the purpose of promoting health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the county, and so on. Now, gentlemen and gentle women, I would prefer that you not mess with my morals, even though it's in the county and it's in SD, Chapter 11.2. I hope that you will take seriously the task of protecting my health and safety. So, as I read this regulation, you have the opportunity to impose realistic reclamation bonds even on drilling, even on exploratory drilling. So, I want you to think about that when you begin to narrow down your requirements in the hard rock mining ordinance. Under South Dakota law, you have the opportunity and the obligation to protect the health and safety of citizens. And the, the most fundamental element of that, of that protection is to protect our water supply. So, it's very interesting to me that when I went on the Gilt Edge Mine tour, the personnel from DENL, DENR admitted repeatedly that the state had dropped the ball on reclamation bonds. Basically, it was said several times, and that they're taking a careful look at that. Okay? So, as you draft the hard rock mining ordinance, know that you have the power to impose substantial costs, reclamation costs. And I would invite you to consider all the closed mines, all the pensionless miners, and so on, when you consider hard rock mining. And make a reclamation, a paragraph about reclamation, that you can actually impose bonds that reflect the actual cost of mining. And as you have learned today, and no doubt know from other times, actual costs of mining go on for decades. For instance, the Gilt Edge Mine. And then point of fact, if you look at acid mine drainage, it could go on for centuries. But you could at least look at decades of the cost, because you can predict that, that someone who comes to you with a, a request for a mining permit might say that it goes bankrupt, such as the gas wells in Harding County, right? And then who's going to pay for that? Okay? Somebody made a lot of money off the Black Jewel Mine in Wyoming, and somebody made some money, perhaps, I guess, on those gas wells in Harding County. But we, the taxpayers, get, end up holding the bag. So, again, I invite you to add language to the hard rock mining ordinance that gives authentic protections to our water supplies. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You have a good day.
Thank you.
Next, we have executive session. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Moved by Roskinet, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Does it have to add the SDCL 1-2521 for the purpose of discussion?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I should have read that. So.
You have one, one and three today, commissioners.
Okay, so we have SDCL 1-25-3 and...
1-25-2 subsection 1, 1-25-2 subsection 3.
Thank you, Holly.
Personnel and pending communication.
Okay. Thank you. Have a motion to come out of executive session?
So, move.
Moved by Drews, second by Roskinet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We do have one motion.
Mr. Roskinet.
Effective October 1st, 2019, Cassie Bullstead and Brittany Molter will be transitioned into professional planner positions in the planning and zoning department with compensation set at grade 17, step 25, with an hourly rate of $31.04.
Second.
Motion by Roskinet, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I think that's the only motion we need, Commission. Next, we go into 21, is the Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion?
Move to go in Board of Adjustments.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. You're up.
Ready? Yep, you're ready. Good morning, Commissioners. PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. Item before you is variance 1906, which is a request to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to 2 feet, and to bring an existing deck and residence into compliance. The applicant is Randall Wheaton, and he is in the audience today if you have any questions for him. This has been before the Board of Adjustment on two occasions, July 2nd and on July 20th. Both instances, it was continued at the applicant's request. So, it is here before you today as a fresh hearing. The property contains a single-family residence and the deck and an additional detached structure. The deck that the property contains has been constructed, and some of it has been removed. There is a building permit that was applied for it, but that building permit has yet to be approved. That is contingent on the variance that you have before you today. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. The county highway department opposes the variance for this deck as it encroaches too close to Old Hill City Road. Also, the ordinance officer noted that there is an open violation, COVO 18237, for the deck, as it was constructed without a building permit. For variances before the board, there are four criteria for our zoning ordinance that the Board of Adjustment uses to determine if the criteria are met for, for a variance. The first item is item A. And staff has verified through a site visit that there is no particular condition, as noted, which warrant approval of this variance. There appears to be adequate room for the construction of the deck on the, on the single-family residence in different location on the property, just not necessarily on the front, closest to Old Hill City Road. The second item, setback variance would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from the property zoned as low-density residential. On the third item, strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the application to meet the 25-foot setback. And as far as an unwarranted hardship, staff's belief is that the applicant's put the hardship onto himself as constructing the deck without an approved building permit. Item D, the fourth item, that granting the setback variance would allow for reduced setback in a limited agriculture district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of our zoning ordinance. Since this item was before the commission, was since the last time, back in early September, the applicant had told staff that he removed a portion of the deck. This is a copy, well, this is a photo of that removal taken from a site visit from our ordinance officer. With that, and the applicant came a little bit closer to extending the amount of encroachment that he is into his setback, meaning that instead of a two-foot request, he's now going somewhere between 10 and 19 feet. Again, without an actual survey, stamp survey, we can't tell for sure. But using, you know, the scales and stuff we have upstairs, it's anywhere between 10 and 19 feet that the request would have to be on, instead of 23 feet. And with that, if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1906, staff would recommend one condition be included.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one question. When you guys were looking at this road, how many encroachments on this road is there? Meaning, is this road built and then people just, you know, there wasn't rules and regulations for planning back then? And many of these houses, decks, different things, garages, did we ever, have you ever figured out how many maybe encroachments we have and, and will be having in the future because of this road?
No, staff did not look at that. And that's this house, not the deck. The house was built in 1961, so long before current ordinance.
I guess that's my concern, is we probably have on this road many of those. And maybe I'm wrong. That's why I asked the question of the encroachment on the road area for people's houses and decks. And maybe Ron, you might know that, being from that area. But so, are we going to go and take it by circumstance, or maybe we have 20 or 30 of these, you see where I'm going, board, that we have to do this to? And we have to pick and choose, is 10 feet enough, is 5 feet enough, depending if there's a tree, if there's a wall there, you know, before. So, Madam Chair. Commissioner LaCroy.
I appreciate your thoughts. I'm thinking, part of this, I remember when we were first talking about this, and part of, and we were discussing about taking off part of the deck. And, and so, I, I'm actually glad that they took that step, because we had good discussion on it, and they've taken and actually reduced it down. Now, is it to where it's still legal? And now it's, from what I'm reading, it's, now it's down to 10 instead of 23. And is it appropriate enough? Because I, if I remember right, the concerns was, you know, that's right around a bend. We could be expanding the road and so forth. But I'll give credit to the landowners for removing part of the deck that was discussed, what, six weeks ago probably, or more? So, they did make an effort to, to reduce it.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd lean in the direction that Lloyd's going. If it were the greater of what PJ was talking about, I would say between 15, anything over 15 feet I'd be comfortable with, but anything under 15 feet I would not be comfortable with.
Okay, let's have the applicant come up. Thank you.
That one, looking back from this way. I can find one. I don't think so, but, sorry.
And your name, sir?
Yeah.
Your, your name?
Randy Wheaton.
Thank you, Randy. You have some questions or some things that you have changed, sir? Can you explain that to the board, sir?
I have some questions.
You might, from what...
Well, I know there, last time we were here, you were talking about, you know, the chance of somebody sliding off the road there and hitting the, you know, hitting the deck, you know, which, no one's going to be on the deck when it's snowing and slick out in the first place. But my, if you look at some of those photos, I think I did take one where the, the front steps from the, where the deck was over the top of, are 16 inches from the front of that. So, I mean, there was already, there was already steps there within 16 inches of the end of my deck anyway. So, I mean, I, the, the sliding into it thing doesn't really make sense to me. You've got telephone poles. There's a telephone pole down the other end of my property on the Keystone line there, that is right next to the road. That rock, my trees, all along that road, people drive that road slow. I don't see the problem with, with that really.
Mr. Wheaton, do you know how many houses? You've probably driven that road a lot. Do you know how many houses or decks or garages that are that close to the road? Is there a lot?
One right down, the cabin right down from me, it's, it's close to the road, too.
Like, close by 10 feet, close by 30 feet?
Haven't measured it. It's, it's under 30 feet, for sure.
Okay, because we do have a 25, at least, setback. You have the road and then the setback of 25 feet. So, okay, that's my question, because the, again, when the road was built, so.
I mean, if anybody slides off, even if somebody did slide off it, they're going to hit the house anyway. So, I mean, the whole house is close to the road, because it was built years ago.
One more question, Commissioner DeSanto. So, where's your front door? You have a picture in here. Is the front door at that corner?
Well, there's two, there's actually two front doors on the front of the porch there.
Okay, and which one do you use the most? Where do you park?
Well, I usually park in front of the, the one in the, kind of in the middle of the place there.
Okay, so that pad there is your parking spot?
Yeah, pretty much. And I drive out, I drive out through the grass and out onto the highway that way.
Okay, thank you.
And the other, the other door goes into a living room on the other side, which was all, which was all there before I, when I bought the place.
Thank you, Mr. Wheaton. Commissioner DeSanto has a question, sir.
My concern isn't so much the, somebody sliding off the road. My concern is the highway department's concern that if we widen the road, we're going to be right back on top of you all over again.
Well, is, is that, that's the question I have. Is that my property, or is it your property? Because my property goes all the way out to the middle of the road on both sides of my land. So, can they just come in there and widen their own and knock my trees down and take my rock out of there and take my driveway and put the road right next to my front door?
I believe they can.
Oh, really?
Up to 33 feet from the center of the road.
Am I paying taxes on that land?
Yes, you are.
Is that mine? Huh? So, I'm paying taxes so you guys can drive on my property?
There, I believe.
Is that how it works?
It's an easement.
That's all.
Everybody has one, even...
People aren't the socialist, huh?
Sir, we have right-ofways in the city that we all pay taxes on, whether it's your sidewalk or not. So, bottom line is, that road, I don't know if the road was there first, or you were, but that's been like that since the beginning of time. When you have a road, you want to be a certain amount away from it in case it builds up. So, you have to have sometimes enough common sense when you see a road, not to be right next to it.
The old house, I mean, the house was there before, and the front steps, there was a front step, concrete steps. There's still under the deck there. I just beat the top off of them, because they both, you know, slumped down about four inches where it looked terrible. So.
Yes, sir.
I mean, as far as being close to the road, it's, it's never going to not be close to the road.
Well, here's something. So, a lot of times when we had things in the city or the county, can you build on the other side of the road? Is there somewhat of the right-ofway, because we have that area in a lot of parts where people have already built, where they, is there enough room on the other side to expand where there isn't a house right next to the road as well? So, if you look at this property, there is, there's nothing on the other side. I don't know if there's a, is there a hill or anything across from it, PJ?
Yeah, it goes up fairly steeply from there, yeah.
Would you like to see a topo? I can pull rapid map up.
That would be nice. Thank you. So, a lot of times, to find solution, we have found that we can, if we're going to build the road a little bit bigger out there, that we could use the opposite side. Because we've had to do that in areas where we had to build sidewalks and stuff in the city, where buildings were too close. So, we had to use the opposite side in order to have a safety factor, or expand sidewalks or roads. So, just, just an option to think about, or something to think about on that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinet.
I, I agree with Mark. If the highway department needs that, we're going to be in a predicament. But the one that really catches me is there, it says there's an open ordinance violation for a deck built without an approved building permit. And if we would have went through the proper building permit application, we might not be here talking about this today. So, there might be a lot of other decks close to the road on the Hill City be a lot of other decks close to the road on the Hill City Keystone Road, but we don't know when they were built, and if they're, they were built without building permits, but the lack of a building permit is what kind of concerns me on this one.
Well, I'm only, I'm only off 14 days a month, like I told you last time, and, you know, I have to work when I'm home, the rest of the time I'm gone, so.
So, yeah.
I mean, really, guys, it's, it's just a deck, I mean, it's 16 inches further out than the old steps on the building.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'm going to be a little out of line, because I want to make a short comment before I make a motion. I think, from the discussions we had prior, he's made an attempt to, to reduce it back. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the variance, with one condition.
And a motion to approve the variance, is there a second? All second for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I would be willing to make a substitute motion to approve the variance at a 10-foot setback, as opposed to a two. It appears that you're within that range at this point in time. I don't want to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote yes on a two-foot setback.
No, I, that's, I'm not worried about that anymore.
Mr. Wheaton, let, let us talk, sir, and then if he has a question, sir.
Sorry.
I would make a substitute motion, I would make a substitute motion that we approve this variance with a 10-foot setback.
I'll second that.
And a substitute for a 10-foot setback? PJ, tell us, on the 10-foot setback, where does that leave us? Where the deck's at? What deck he has to remove, if he has to remove any other deck? Can you kind of show us what that means with the 10-foot?
Well, the first thing is, it means that he can have a 15, he can go out 15 feet into the 25-foot setback, I think that's what you're trying to say. So, for using these, again, this is very general.
Yes, sir.
What he's removed is, is helpful, but, and looking on the picture on the right-hand side, without having a scale, and with this being a two-foot encroachment, some more of the deck might have to come off around this area, to meet the 10-foot.
Okay. So you understand what we're saying now, Mr. Wheaton?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a stake out on the edge of the road out there by that rock.
Yes, sir.
And I measured from there to the front of my deck, and it was like 11 or 12 feet, something like that. I don't remember what it was, but...
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a substitute, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
10-foot, sir.
Make it 10-foot, okay.
All planning, I'll work with you to make sure we're all on the same page, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wheaton, for your time today.
Yeah, sorry, I'm cranky, I've been working all night.
You're okay, sir. All right, item B is the, next one, Ms. Cassie, please.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead. Item B is the second variance for you guys, it's variance 1912. This is a request to reduce the minimum required lot size from 10 acres to 8.64 acres and 3 acres in a limited agriculture district. The applicants are Will and Michaela Parsons, they are in the audience today, if you do have any questions for them. You guys have seen this property before, they are in the middle of plating this property. Currently, it exists as one 11.64 acre parcel, access is off of Naughty Pine Lane, and it currently contains a single-family residence with a detached garage. What they're proposing to do is subdivide this into these two lots. Lot A would be 8.64 acres, lot B would be 3 acres. What they're wanting to do is subdivide off lot B in order to sell it to the property owner to the south for access purposes. So here's your four criteria for a variance request. For criteria number one, staff has verified through a site visit that there are no particular physical conditions which would warrant approval of a lot-size variance. Item B, the lot-size variance would not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from properties owned as limited acre. Item C, strict application of the zoning ordinance would require proposed lots A and B of Naughty Pine subdivision to meet the minimum lot-size requirement of 10 acres, or be rezoned to the appropriate zoning district. There was a document that should be included, that was submitted by the applicant, and he stated that the hardship for the variance is for the bordering neighbor to access their property. As the property is now, there is no possible access from Naughty Pine Lane to their land. And then the fourth criteria, granting this lot-size variance would allow for an 8.64 acre and a 3 acre lot to be created in a limited agriculture district. However, it does not appear to be contrary to the public interest, and staff has not received any formal complaints or concerns regarding the property or the requested variance. And again, per the documents submitted by the applicant, the granting of the variance will not be contrary to any public interest. Granting the variance will allow the neighboring property to absorb three of the 11.64 acres, and this will in no way affect any neighboring properties or cause an increase in density. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process, nothing of significant concern came back. In 2017, the applicant did attempt to subdivide this property into three lots at that time. At that time, it was going to be two 3-acre parcels, and then a parcel that was a little over 5 acres. He actually went through the layout plat process, which was approved in January of 2017. At that time, the three lots were going to be subdivided in order to be developed and sold separately. He did apply for a lot-size variance at that time, and that was denied in February of 2017, so ultimately, he did withdraw that plat. As you can see, and as I've stated, he is now coming back and wanting to break off that 3-acre parcel over there, but it's my understanding that that 3-acre parcel would be absorbed by the property owner to the south, it's for access purposes, not for development purposes. The Board of Commissioners did approve the layout plat for that, at the September 20th meeting, and the Planning Commission did approve the minor plat for that subdivision at their September 23rd meeting, that, the minor plat is also on your guys' consent agenda today. And if approved, this variance would satisfy condition number one of the minor plat. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1912, staff does not recommend any conditions be included, as any issues or concerns are being addressed through the plating process.
Move for approval.
Thank you. We do have speaker requests. If you'd like to wait on that, or you can make a motion if you'd like.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. First, we'll have the opposed, and I do have Pat Breimeister. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Pat, if you would state your name, that way I could get it right.
It's Pat Briesmeister.
Briesmeister.
You guys set the rules up at 10 acres, okay? I don't need 3 acres to access adjoining land. Why can't you make it, there are other options. I guess the way it's designed right now, all of us are there for our space, and I'm not concerned about what they want to do, per se, give them access, but I am concerned that you guys are even considering giving it an option, 3 acres? My God, you can have a horse on 3 acres. All, all one gentleman wants is access to his land, so he can cut some timber down and, and do what he wants. But really, I'm, I'm not for cutting it to 8 acres, because then you're setting a precedent, because the next guy's going to come and say, well, you gave an exception for 8 acres, I want to cut it down to 6 acres. Well, you're going down a slippery slope. So I, I encourage you to, to go back to the 10 acres, and let them figure out, if they want to go 10 acres and 1 acre, that still gives them access, he's looking for a two-track road. He's not looking for, you know, Interstate 90 to come through there. So please, have him go back and reconsider and come up with something else, but keep the sanctity of the 10 acres that we all live by.
Madam Chair.
Let's have everybody speak, and then, if you'd like to call them back up, that'd be cool.
All right.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else against on this property?
I got...
Come on up, sir, if you'd like to speak, sir, and your name, sir.
My name's Lowell Housman, and I've got the land just across the road. I agree with Pat. It's, it's all about the 10 acres, that's the reason I bought out there. I bought 26 acres, he bought 40 acres, because of the 10-acre rule. We wanted to have properties where we weren't minimizing, getting smaller. And I do appreciate, back in 17, I spoke here at that time, too, where you didn't allow it to go to 3, 3, and 5, and that was the reason why. The sanctity, as he said, of the, you, you start going one-offs, you start getting to more one-offs, and more one-offs. When does it stop? Now I start, can I split that 26 into 26 1-acre spots? So, and, huh? Are you going to allow me to do that? That's where it starts getting into, into a problem. I appreciate you listening to me, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's have the applicant up, if he can explain why he has the 8.64 and the 3 acres, and why it was split, and kind of some of the concerns of the neighbors.
Aye.
Either side, sir, and your name, sir.
Will Parsons. So, we're splitting it to a 3-acre lot, basically just, like I say, it's to grant access to the neighbor behind us, so, and also, just like financial reasons, like 3 acres is kind of what makes it worth it to do for us, and that, that 3 acres is what's an unusable land for us personally. And if you see to the east of that picture there, most of those lots are 3 to, 3, 4-acre lots, which, I mean, we're not rewriting the books, we're just doing what's been done before. So like I say, all I'm doing is, well, like I say, not trying to add population out there, serenity-wise, nothing's changing, other than access to behind us, so...
Thank you. I have three more speaker requests, Lowell Housman?
Hello.
Okay, Daniel Crowe? You, Daniel, sir?
Crowe.
Crowe. Sorry, can't read very good. Come on up, sir, thank you. Mr. Parsons, you'll probably have questions from the commission, after we have a few more of these speakers.
Ladies and gentlemen, hi, I'm Daniel Crowe. I'm acting as an advisor to Will and Michaela, largely because Michaela's my daughter, so I, I got invited to Opine. I've been a developer since 1970, and I've developed lots of land in South Dakota and elsewhere. The argument to make the access lot smaller, so that the other remaining lot can be larger, actually works against the argument to make the 10-acre lot 10 acres, and that is that you're allowing a smaller lot than 3 acres, which is the context of the neighborhood. All of the lots to the east of the proposed lot are 3 acres, or slightly larger, maybe 3 to 4. So, I, I think the strategy here was to try to be in context with the, the neighboring lots, so that what's left, may, may be smaller than 10, but what's being carved out for access is at least 3 acres neighboring the other 3-acre lots. So, that's the, that's the thinking behind the size that's proposed.
Thank you. We have one more speaker request, John Sawyer.
Hi, my name is John Sawyer. I own lots 5 and 6, right behind the property that Will has. I have, there's a Rockwall Canyon that runs north and south between, all the way through lot 5 and 6, so I have no actual access to the property on the other side of the canyon. I'm interested in purchasing that property, not for developmental purposes, just to put access, so I can maintain that other side of the, my property. I'm saying at least, close to half of my property lies behind Will's place. Fortunately, I've always been able to access through their place, just by their permission, but him being selling it again, that might not be an option the next time. I understand my neighbor's concerns. If there was a way that I could just absorb that into my property and not create a new lot, just add it to, to my existing lot, that would be fine, too. That's...
So you're, you're for this, John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, commission, questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'll just repeat what Mr. Crowe actually said, exactly what I was thinking, in the spirit of what Pat said about creating a precedence, even if we divided up nine acres and 1 acre, we're still setting a precedence. And, and there's been other variances allowed throughout the Black Hills, throughout Pennington County, anyway. I know that we voted on variances to reduce property sizes for access purposes in the past. So, we may be, in theory, setting a precedence, but we still hold the ability to say, we're not going to issue this variance just so that you can build something new on your property, or we're not going to issue this variance for whatever purpose, with the exception of, I mean, in this particular situation, we're simply making it so that someone else can access their, their property, without the, without the thought process of building and adding, and really not changing the landscape too much, other than maybe putting a driveway in, I guess, is what, what the purpose is. But I understand your concern, and I hear where you're coming from, but I think that, that allowing someone to be able to access their property is important as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion or more discussion? Or questions?
Move for approval, second.
Moved by LaCroy for approval, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion today.
Moved to come out of Board of Adjustments.
Second. Motion by LaCroy, second by DeSanto, to come out of Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C, thank you, PJ.
You're welcome. Consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly.
PJ, one second. Guys, please visit out in the hall, thank you.
Okay, start over.
Give us just a second. There you go, thank you, PJ.
Start over again. The consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board, and items may be removed when a consent agenda is placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C, Plan Unit Development Review 0607 for Rapid City MHP LLC, Simran Mobile Home Park. It's recommended to be continued to know later than November's 19th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item D, Plan Unit Development Review 0902 for the Salvation Army, and approval's been recommended. Item E, Minor Plaid MPL 1925 for Julie Benson Wilber. It's been recommended to be continued to November 5th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item F, Minor Plaid 1927 for William and Michaela Parsons, and approval's been recommended.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, anyone in the public who wish to pull any items C, D, E, F off the consent agenda? If not, is there any commissioners that would like to pull any items C, D, E, and F? If not, do we have a motion?
Take the motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Moved by Drew, second by DeSanto, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved by Drew, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.